I have a few housekeeping items. So again, good evening. Our town hall meeting will begin promptly at 5:00 p.m. and will conclude by 6:30. The regular board meeting will follow starting at 6:30 p.m. Thank you all for joining us tonight. We are in the early stages of planning for a potential reconfiguration of our schools for the 25-26 school year. Our proposal involves shifting to a 7-12 grade model. This approach is grounded in research, previous successful models, and factual data, including patterns of decline in enrollment and rise in cost. Our goal is to ensure the long-term success and sustainability of our district. Following the Reimagining Mount Vernon City School District presentation, we will be addressing questions. If you've already sent in your question via email, we have those on hand. If you would like to submit additional questions tonight, our staff will be distributing index cards for you to write down your questions. Once collected, our staff will compile and present the questions for discussion to make sure we address as many concerns as possible. We invite members of our community to join our reconfiguration subcommittees. This is an excellent opportunity to contribute to the planning process. Information on joining can be found on our district website, and we'll also have a QR code available for quick signup. We welcome your ideas and input as we work together on this important initiative. So we're calling tonight "A Path to Sustainability and Growth." Can I have the first page, please? Next page. This screen is our honorable board trustees. I believe, for the most part, they're here with us this evening. We want to thank them all for our support. The next page, please. The next page shows the committee members. This is the members of our REOG committee. Noel Campbell, Michelle McKitty Bromley, Jeanne Casino. Let me give their titles. Noel Campbell is Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. Michelle McKitty Bromley is the Director of Pupal Personal Services. Ms. Jeanne Casino is a teacher and MVFT Vice President. Dr. Pauline Perez is the Principal at Mount Vernon High School. Dr. Jamal Doggett is Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction. Ms. Carrie Peters-Smith is a parent. Mr. Jose Formoso is Assistant Superintendent of Business. Mr. Mark Ramondi is Associate Superintendent for Operations and Accountability. Mr. Orville Gale is a parent and community member. Mr. Carlos Ramirez is the Director of Technology. Ms. Lorna Kerwin is a board trustee. Ms. Adrian Saunders is the Board President. Mr. Keith McCall is a teacher and MVFT president. Mr. Chris Madonna is a board trustee. Yours truly, I'm the acting superintendent. Dr. Crystal Waterman is the Principal of Williams and the Mount Vernon Administrator Group President. And lastly, Wanda White is a board trustee. As I indicated, we have subcommittees. You'll be able to find that online, and you're welcome to join. Some people have already made their requests. You could always email us as well. Next page, please. The Mount Vernon City School District comprises its board members, staff, scholars, parents, and community members. It's dedicated to fostering an inclusive environment that recognizes every scholar's unique qualities while providing a comprehensive and rigorous education that promotes respect, cultivates character, and inspires intellectual growth. The district is committed to empowering scholarships to become lifelong learners who are successful and responsible citizens and who positively contribute to their local and global community. The vision statement. Go one back, please. One back. The Mount Vernon City School District, through a shared decision-making process, is committed to helping its scholars, parents, teachers, and administrators enhance their academic, social, economic, and technological skills to prepare individuals to function effectively in today's global society. The executive summary. The Mount Vernon City School District is facing significant challenges due to decline in enrollment and expenses continually exceeding revenue. This situation necessitates a shift from the pre-K8 educational model to the pre-K6 and the 7-12 configuration. To ensure a successful reconfiguration, collaboration among district leadership, parents, trustees, administrators, teachers, community leaders, and students will be crucial. Input from all stakeholder groups will guide the development of this plan to ensure it meets the needs of our diverse community. Ms. Casino?
Good evening. I am Jeanne Casino. I am the teacher at Benjamin Turner Academy, and I am also the Vice President of the Mount Vernon Federation of Teachers. Prior to 2017, we had 7th grade and 8th grade at two different schools. One school was in receivership. It was at Davis Middle School. Our superintendent, former superintendent, Dr. Hamilton, formed a committee to research various models throughout the country, the district, to see which model would be the best for our city. They decided on the K-8 model. The K-8 model would help schools because parents would not take their kids out of the 6th grade, 5th grade, move them someplace else. They would keep them in their home school up until 8th grade. We thought that this would keep the enrollment steady and then gradually increase enrollment. We had three high schools of excellence that were forming. Parents would keep their students in schools from K-8 and then move to one of our three high schools. After COVID hit in 2020, many families moved out of our city because, due to remote working, they could work anywhere, so they did not stay. Enrollment did not increase. Enrollment across the district actually decreased. Prior, around 2017, it was about 10,000 students, and you'll see in a later slide, we're less than 7,000. The K-8 model is very expensive for very few students. Teachers were, in the beginning, were being split, traveling from one school to another, from Benjamin Turner to Lincoln. We lost several teachers at the secondary level who did not want to travel to buildings. Principals wanted their faculty, their staff, in one building. There was one English teacher in the building. There was no camaraderie. PLCs were difficult. You needed to have Spanish teachers in every building. You need to have business teachers. They changed the requirements for SED certification. They had to have a content. It was very expensive, and now here we are, years later, with financial difficulties, having 12, 13 middle schools. Certification issues. And that was it. Thank you. Next slide.
Thank you, everybody. We appreciate everybody who showed up tonight. My name's Jose Formoso. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Business here at the Mount Vernon City School District. I'm going to start. I know a question that's come up over time is, why do we need to make these changes now? So typically, I don't read directly through slides, but I think it's very important that people not only read along, but listen to what I'm saying, because this is a very significant moment for Mount Vernon City School District. So the position the district, the areas they need to address are the current and projected declining enrollment, staffing issues and inefficiencies throughout the district, underutilized buildings, capital improvements that are cited on the building condition survey and have been cited on past building condition surveys, contracts that need to be settled across the bargaining units, specifically the MBFT, which has been out since 2022. We also have the administrators group that expired last year, and we have the CSCE that's coming to expire this year. We also have been cited for significant fiscal distress, which I will go in on later slides. Here is a chart showing the continued declining enrollment. This is not something that recently started. This has been a trend here at Mount Vernon, going back to around 2014, 2015, I believe, is when we hit a peak number, and then it declines over time continuously. So when we look here, you'll see that there was an enrollment of 8,190 students. This is K to 12 in 2014. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm one. My apologies. We had to use this room to accommodate for the amount of people. I could have somebody else zoom in, but this computer's not connected to there. So if we want to zoom in, if someone wants to go to that computer, they could zoom in to the area. This is all going to be available online. Yeah, the entire presentation. You can't zoom it? Okay. This is what I'll do. I'm going to go over the key numbers in summary. So 2014, we had 8,190 students enrolled. By 2023, we were down to 6,483 students. It's a decline of 19.6% facing the district. There was a demographic study done. It was a 23-24 comprehensive, long-range plan. It was facilitated through BOSIS. The document was presented at a board meeting as well. What it showed was that the enrollment is projected to decline even further. So by 2033, if all the data holds equal, we'd be looking at 5,168 students in Mount Vernon, which would be another 20.3% decrease. So if you think about that in terms of size, you're talking about over 3,000 students less than where we were at before in a district that has 16 school buildings, one of them that used to have a capacity of 3,500 kids alone. So this unfortunately is going to be tiny because of this screen, but the main point is this actually shows all the buildings, all the grade levels, and the total students right now, as of right now, K to 12, is 6,578. So now I'm going to actually talk about the declining fiscal condition. I only went to June 2021. We are having a fiscal analysis done in conjunction with a company called Capital Market Advisors. They specialize in fiscal analysis for districts who are cited in fiscal distress. So in June of 2021, we ended the year with a $10,335,788 deficiency of revenue over expenditures. So that means that our expenditures exceeded our revenue by over $10 million. June of 2022, expenditures exceed revenue by $4,372,000. June of 2023, we end the year with expenditures exceeding revenue at $3.3 million. The financials that we will be presenting for the audit that happened on June 30, 2024, will show an over $4 million expenditures over revenue. In January of 2024, Mount Vernon City School District was one of only three school districts in the entire state to be identified as significant fiscal stress by the Office of the State Controller. Two and three were tied, so really, we were number two on that. That is before, this is cited before the new financials that come out. So here, we talk about the uncollected school taxes. We are currently, the city is currently making payments for the taxes that were 1920 and prior. That's expected to be complete this year. 2020, 2021 taxes are still, we ended the year, by the way, these are as of our financials that were audited, 6:30, 2024. So this is how we ended last school year, with $3.5 million owed from 2020, 2021, $3.9 million, 21, 22, 22, 23, almost $5 million, 23, 24, almost $7 million, 6.8. So this is uncollected, prior-year school taxes. The total number equates to $24,247,438. So when you look at that, that's the cash flow that, in normal situations, we would have received that we have not. I will explain. So the employees that are collecting taxes have nothing to do with taxpayers not paying them. So I really want to clarify that. We cannot force, the city has, the school has no ability to force someone to pay their taxes. We cannot, there's no foreclosure, that all comes from the city. So I will explain this now because I think it's important, because there has been confusion in the past on this. By law, after we certify our taxes and the amount that is uncollected, the city has two years to make the school whole. That is by law. This is not a choice that we have. This is the reality of the situation. Does that always occur? No, it doesn't. But this is the reality that Mount Vernon faces. So that $6.8 million, and we are still collecting on it. So that number has gone down over time. But we don't have to be made whole for two years to collect them. It's moving by, I'm not going to lie to you, I put this down, and this is moving by itself. So I don't know if there's a timer, but that's a struggle we face. Yes, that will show up. And just to clarify something, the city, once we pass that, when people come to make payments to us, we collect those taxes. The city collects any taxes they're receiving, and on a monthly basis, they send us those taxes with a report to show what they received. Yes, exactly. So we are working in conjunction with the city, but this is the current situation that we're facing. Here, I'm going to talk about the financial benefits of the 7-12 model. I really am touching upon some of the biggest budget issues that we have. So the areas that would be significantly reduced are buildings and grounds, transportation, costs in personnel, costs in benefits, and our insurance costs. Here's the measures that we've been taking in order to address the issues. I feel like I should have Carlos as the assistant to me on this case, but I got both. So I hope this doesn't move, because I just want to, I really want to address this. So when we came in, we did have a change in cabinet, but we were very aware that the district was on a declining path. This did not start one year ago, two years ago. This goes back many years in terms of the expenditures exceeding the revenue. So what we did was, we worked with a firm called Capital Market Advisors. They specifically help distressed school districts, like a Poughkeepsie City School District, who was in issues similar to us about four years ago, to work on ways to get out of these issues. They are working on a fiscal analysis, which will be presented publicly when it's done. They're expecting it to be done by the end of November, so we'll be able to talk about that in December. We're also working on a multi-year financial plan so that we can get ahead of these issues and also start to work on plans where we can build our reserves, we can build our fund balance, so that when situations come, like the issues with not receiving taxes, we're able to better absorb that in the short term. We're working on increasing our revenue from state aid. Questar has a division called the State Aid Planning Unit, and one of their main focuses is to help school districts maximize the aid that they receive from the state. We're also doing an efficiency study for transportation, so ways that we could better improve our routing, ways that we could cut back on the cost in transportation. This year alone, our transportation cost is expected to reach $19 million. Just to give context to that, it was about $14 million. I'm talking to this. It's not on the slide. And then we're also doing a facility study. So the facility study is being done through BOSIS in order for us to properly maximize the use of our facilities and really lay out the district as a whole and be able to provide the most efficiency possible. Now we're going to get into the engagement summary. I believe, Carlos, are you presenting this part? Thank you, everyone. I appreciate the time.
Good afternoon, everybody. Carlos Ramirez, Director of Technology and CIO of the School District, more members, community. So I'm presenting on the process that we follow in order to engage on due diligence conducted in the school community. Next slide, please. So the district provided with a first survey to be conducted with the school community, and the community responded to this survey in a number that I can share with you right now. So we invite all the members of the community to actually participate, it's parents, administrators, teachers. And the results were that the community responded with the options that we had to actually attend to the configuration of the schools. The majority of the participants selected to change the model. Go to the next slide. You can see the percentage right there. And this included teachers, administrators, and staff, as well as parents and community. We also follow up. It's right there on the top. Correct. Survey number one had a total participants of 763 people. 763 people, yes. Yeah, the survey was posted on the website. It was communicated to everybody via phone call, email. Okay. 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 And that was the first instance. And that was...
Good evening. We're trying to get through this. We know that Mount Vernon has a tendency not to necessarily respond to surveys or to go out and vote. We have like 10,000, 100,000. No, wait, wait. What I'm saying, surveys is qualitative. Okay. What I'm saying basically, in regards to the survey, it's qualitative. Everyone doesn't have to respond. It's a sample.
Understood. That was the first survey.
No, the survey says that the survey in January and February, no one responded to that survey, so you must have had your 753 people reply and say yes. That's the only thing that would make sense. Okay? I go and vote to the school board, and I'm usually one of 10 or one of 100 that vote. So I know what you're talking about, the voting. But this doesn't make sense. You're talking about age appropriate when it's really about financial and ethical issues. So when you speak about age appropriate, in six through eight grades or seven through eight grades, which is what it was before, when I went to A.D. Davis, that was Davis and Davis. Okay? So we can go back to seven through eight or six through eight, which makes more logical sense, not seven through twelve. You're going to have to get your money from city halls, get your money from your developers that get past seven or five or 10 years, because we pay a lot of taxes. Let's get to the real issues at hand. Age appropriate, six through eight or seven through eight. Figure out what the school keeps of it. That's a different discussion. That's a different discussion. Don't bring age appropriate with fiscal and financial. Those are three different issues.
We would like to make the report. We also invite you guys to participate. We just started. We've had... Can I speak? We had one committee. We have subgroups that we're inviting... Right now, we're proposing something to you.
And we're going to vote this survey or town hall meeting because it's part of the process. So after this is done, the process has been completed. We're not listening to parents. We're the parents. We're telling you, we don't want our kids in a high school.
I wish this would have happened before this survey.
And I know a lot of the parents at my school speak a whole different language. So, I never saw the next survey came out that had Spanish, it had Portuguese, it had something else other than just English, because I know I struggle with my parents to try to get them to do right with me.
And parents don't, don't, don't have to be a lot of children.
They're not here yet, no.
Okay, so at this point, let's forget a PowerPoint. Let's talk. You want to talk? Let's talk. Let's talk. We're presenting to you, it's not just fiscal.
I think it's important to see the information, because otherwise, it just becomes a big argument.
We can't get through it. You, you guys, it's objective.
The problem is, we can't see it, number one. Number two, to have a meeting like this without this information coming out beforehand or without this information coming out before a survey, the people can no way. Excuse me. I'm going to finish my statement. I'm going to finish my statement.
Send this out to you and reschedule the town hall. Would you prefer that?
I would prefer that.
Can we also open back up the surveys, so that more parents have access?
With ten percent of the people answering it, it's not a full delegation.
All right, so what we're going to do, we're going to post this, and we'll schedule another town hall. Can we open back up the survey?
If you're going to be the survey, to be the decision maker for all of this, we need to have fully educated people about it.
We have two more surveys that were also given, so the last one has more than thousand.
Can we show you the information?
What were the questions asked on the third survey? That survey did ask if we wanted our children in a high school. That survey asked if we wanted.
If this, we will send it to you, so that you can see it, and then we will. Can, can we, we have parents on the committee and community members on the committee and have the committee vote whether or not the survey should be reopened? We will invite you to come back to a town hall.
Can we have it be a town hall at a time where parents aren't just getting home from work now?
What time?
Seven P.M.? What time, what time do we think? Who am I? I'm a parent in this district. That's who I am.
So, the question we also had was, we did three surveys. So, the first survey, you said it was seven hundred respondents. How many from the second survey? How many from the third survey? So, while, yes, I understand that you want to get us information, but we also do want to know how many more respondents replied to the second survey.
Unique individual response.
There's no transparency.
Yeah. You can't have ten percent and just make a decision that's ten percent for the whole school district. A lot of parents don't.
Let me just say something. I know a lot of Spanish-speaking people that did not know, let me finish. That did not know that the survey was about their kids being moved to high schools. I spoke to them this weekend.
What's discrepancy there? Why were there so few people in the first two surveys, and then the big survey has two thousand people?
The last survey was the critical question, and that's why the majority disapproved. The model of going after K six and sending to.
Who was, who was sent out the first survey? Because here, on the last survey, you had nine hundred staff members. Were there, if, I, I would assume that if there were nine hundred staff members sent out this survey on the first two, there would be nine hundred respondents from staff members. So, who was the first two surveys sent to?
The first survey was posted on Facebook. That's where it was. It was posted on Facebook. It was sent to me from somebody else who posted, who saw it on Facebook and said, "Have you seen this?" So, I sent it around to all the parents in Pennington. So, that's probably where you get most of your responses, honestly.
I want to tell you, we responded to all three surveys. The issue that I have with the survey, the survey was not very clear. I happen to know more about what was going on in the school, but it never mentioned anything about financial issues. So, I think the survey was not grounded on being truthful and honest. In this transparency, this is now new to me, when I responded to that survey, and I did all three of them.
I did none of them.
I got five text messages over the meeting in the past two weeks, and I got one email about a survey.
I'm here now. I, I know that people, I would love to hear the rest of what you're going to say.
What was this for?
Questions.
Questions, like.
Questions are gone.
Questions are gone. But I'd like to finish, finish what you're going to say. But I want a kickback of two thousand. I had a question about that. So, I want, if you have, I'd love to hear about it.
Our goal is to share the information that we captured. Now, obviously. Correct. Correct. In order transparency, that's what we distribute these cards, so we get the feedback from you. So, the last. Yes. Yes, I'm going to read it. So, we are up to the third survey that was just administered a couple of weeks ago, that had a participation of about two thousand nine people. Out of that universe, forty, forty-eight percent were parents. Probably fifty percent of those participating were parents. And the results were a support for the model of seven to twelve. That was one of the questions. And keeping the K six in most of our buildings. Those were the results. He's trying to put it bigger, so we can actually share on the screen. We got to the third survey after inquiring if they wanted to change, what actions we have. So, these were the two options that first were available.
So, the way that you guys sent the meeting and by the town hall, I got, I got so many emails about the town hall meeting, but that survey was like crazy. They came from crazy. Like, what is happening? I'm a parent. I'm a fully engaged parent, full-time working parent, and you, and you didn't write inbox with this meeting for the town hall. But when it came to that survey, it was like smell there.
Okay. We did also social media. We did multiple, multiple menus to try to contact everybody and provide for the opportunity to participate in the survey. Those are the results that we had in those three instances. I'm sure. Let's go back to the presentation. I like go back.
I think that, that because it's for the kids, that some type of pamphlet or flyer or something should be given to every child in the district. And then, on top of that, the principal, how they do a robo-call to say, "Your child is coming home this week with information about the seven to twelve program. Please read it." It's just like when they have to register for, before when they used to go from middle school to high school, when you did one survey. And because some people, they're inundated, and they don't have time to even go on an email, because they work different hours. So, that's one way that every child in this district should have something to bring home, and the district should make sure for that whole week to do a robo-call, make sure you check the child's backpack, make sure you check that it's in reference to this. Because when things don't happen like this, this will get, and you have to understand why you're frustrated. But think about its access here in Mount Vernon.
I don't know.
That's, you know, we got to still be fair to everybody, but I think that's one way you can still get out there, so people can see it. Because I'm on, I didn't see the survey. I just saw this about the meeting, you know.
Well, I would, I think you said that already was transparent, saying, "We need another meeting, we will do another meeting." But I think that the most important is that you hear all the information that is being put together, so you get a better understanding, the why, the why now, and why we need to do this. I'm going to turn to the next slide, and I think that the presentation is by Mr. Raimondi, right? Mark?
Excuse me. I, I sent this with live shooting link, as well as the email from twenty fifteen or more parents, because of Mark, we need to work in this, and we're forced to go in because the board is making his back into office, and I'm getting messages from one parent that said she's sick, and believes that the test is unable to, and parents cannot participate. She said she was unable to log in, she was not able to access. And one person said they could hear, but they could not see anything. So, I have done my best, although I'm here to send it to fifteen or more parents, and I text them at five o'clock, and say, "Meet in this now, certain person, live stream for a meeting." Some of the parents that I notified are here, and thank you guys so much for all the standing behind me, and I battle, and I'm not the only one who battles, so thank you very much. But parents were not able to log in, some families are here, and they cannot see or not. So, we're here, and we can't see, they're live streaming, and they can't see or hear. And that's what these fifteen twenty parents have done. Yes, yes, I copied it from your email.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Keith McCall. I'm an AIS math teacher at Edward Williams Elementary School and the president of the Mount Vernon Federation of Teachers. I just want to briefly talk about the K to eight model and its effect on our staff. Can we go to the next slide, please? Next slide. So, our middle school teachers are really, really stretched thin. An example is, some of our staff have to go between schools during the week. For example, Monday and Tuesday, they may be at one school. Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, they're at another school. It's very, very difficult for those members who have to do that to have a sense of belonging at one particular school. Information is lost if they're not there on a particular date. Also, teachers during the school day, some of our staff, they travel to multiple schools during the day. For example, their morning classes may be at Benjamin Turner, then in the afternoon, they may teach a class or two at another location. So, just going back and forth during the day is also challenging. This also creates a challenge, because there's limited opportunities for collaboration with colleagues, especially in the content specialty areas. For example, if you're the only, let's pick grade eight, if you're the only science teacher that teaches grade eight at that school, it's difficult to collaborate. Who are you going to collaborate with? There's no one else there. So, there's just challenges like that, that the NVFT teachers who teach like this, they experience. We've actually had situations where we've lost staff members, as Ms. Casino said, because of this. One year, they may be in a school for the whole year, and then, the next year, they might be asked to be split amongst schools, and some teachers have decided to pursue other opportunities because of this one factor. Another thing, my final point, is the logistics with our K to eight model. The middle school is considered secondary. It's two different schedules, and that also makes it very difficult for the principals in terms of scheduling as well. Thank you for your time and attention. Hold on. Are you going to ask me a question about what I just presented? Okay, sure. Go ahead. Well, yes. The, the, the K through eight model brings about specific challenges for our middle school teachers, okay? Not all, but, but the majority of them. Some, some middle school teachers that are in one school, and that's their school, and they're teaching their, their five subject periods, it really does an effect. But we have a lot of staff members who are split between schools. You know, two days there, they're at one school, three days there, at another school. It's one of the things that comes about through this particular model. I don't do scheduling. There's, there's so many. Yeah, there's so many different factors that go into scheduling, but the district does the scheduling. There was a hand up here first, and then we'll go to you. Yes.
I will teach us collaborate in the seven to twelve grade model.
Okay, well, let me just say this. Nothing has been set in stone. This is, this is just. Okay, wait, that's, I'm a member of the committee, and I feel confident in saying that as of today, nothing has been decided. The purpose of this meeting is to present information to the community. That's the purpose of the meeting. Yes.
My first question was, what is the numbers of the teachers who are going from school to school? And second, at the top of the presentation before it started, it was said that this was, this was supposed to be a thousand, it was going to be five, like next school year. And that's why we're also alarmed, because it's like next school year. So, we have to understand, this is new for us, so we're trying to get the information that you're giving us. So, what is the numbers of teachers that are going from school to school? That would be amazing for our parents and community people, want to know. What is, what are those numbers?
Okay, I, I don't know the specific number, but I'm going to ensure HR can get that to you. What was this, the second point?
I was just saying how, because we're alarmed, because we said that it's starting basically next school year. And so, that's alarming to all the parents.
Okay, but, but as I just stated, nothing has been decided. Nothing, nothing has been, based upon, it, nothing has been decided. Nothing has been decided.
I have a question. You mentioned committee. Who are, who are the members on this committee? Are there any parents on this committee? How can I get on that?
I'm going to ensure Dr. Smith will go over that again. Yes.
I have a question. The reality is, there's a shortage of teachers, and I understand there are issues with the seven to eight model. There is. So, we're not going to ignore that, but the proposal with the seven to, with the seven to nine, or seven to twelve model, you're just, you're not, the roots of the issues are not really solved. You're just moving the vocals from one area to the next one. So, how do you fix that? You're not going to fix teacher shortage by just doing this. So, your idea for these are teachers, they're not.
Okay. I was just speaking on the challenges that our members who are middle school teachers are facing. Okay, those questions I will address. Yes.
Do you give a separate survey to the teachers to see if they supported a move? Because I know that my teachers at Pennington didn't hear anything about a survey, didn't know about the survey, weren't emailed the survey, and didn't know about the call.
Okay, I'm, I believe that the NVFT staff was well aware of each of the surveys. Yes.
And as you said, you're concluding your portion of the show. What is that? What is that? Who did that block you?
What is that? Who did that block you?
No, no.
How much more, how much more, how much...
Well, you're going to have to stick around the seat. Thank you for your time. Yes.
If this goes through and they can model this segment that will go through, then they should be children. What happens to the buildings where our children went to school?
They're going to...
There will be other things presented. You have to address that.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Board of Trustees, Acting Superintendent, Her Cabinet Staff, Admin, Parents, Guardians, and all stakeholders of the Mount Vernon City School District. Good afternoon. I want to talk about the Denzel Washington School of the Arts. And we currently have a 6-12 model. And I want to talk about the benefits of that model and how it has helped our children and how it is succeeding and how our achievement has gone up. So why do we exist? We are a creative community that has opportunities for students to excel academically and artistically. Our students are admitted based on their talent. And I do accept all students across Mount Vernon City School District. It is not just based on academics. Students are show proficiency in piano, voice, musical instrument, dance, musical theater, acting, visual arts, creative writing, technical theater, and down the road filmmaking, as we are experimenting with that at this time. We serve to nurture and to utilize the arts integration framework for success in the academics. So why do I believe the 6-12 model is successful? Number one, students, it creates for students a consistency and a stability that students have from grade six all the way through 12th grade. A lot of my students are exposed to industry professionals, and they have a chance to work with them on a consistent basis. Their long-term relationship with peers and teachers that is shown to be very fruitful for our students. Not only that, older students mentor our middle school students, guiding them. They're seeing positive examples, and so the responsibility is definitely there with the older students. We have personalized learning opportunities, increased student engagement, more profound social-emotional development, a more focused curriculum, better prepared for higher education. When we talk about the social-emotional, that's very important to us because we help to develop self-awareness, empathy, and better decision-making skills across the spectrum, and we start in the sixth grade. Also, teachers can identify students early to address behavioral issues, academic issues, interventions, and support problems, academic problems before they escalate. So a couple of research that I did to support this model. According to the Harvard Education Magazine, families benefit from attending a school that serves grade six through 12 as it minimizes the transitions. And I can tell you that a lot of the parents that I have met during this time, we know them on a long-term basis. And so they can simply call me, Ms. Thomas, hey, da-da-da, I need da-da-da. And we're able to help because we have established a relationship with the parents. Not only the parents, but also, you know, the families in general. It's a family-community share. In addition to that, the academic achievement, because of the arts framework, the academic achievement has gone up. I do have a one-page profile that I have, if you'd like a copy of that. I can tell you that I've sustained graduation rates in the 90s since 2021, and I'm very proud of the Denzel Washington School of the Arts.
And how many students do you have at this school? So how many students do you have?
I'm sorry. Okay, Ms. Peterson, I would love to answer your question. Okay? To be precise, I have 430 students. And enrollment actually has gone up because last year it was 317.
So that number compared to the 500 new members, what's the difference?
I'm not sure what the numbers are because I am not cognizant of Mount Vernon High School numbers. Yes, ma'am.
I'm a parent with a child at Denzel Washington School. My child's actually in sixth grade at the school. Even the other day when I had a sweatshirt delivered and the principal called me, I'm like, oh my God, I thought something happened. I do appreciate the model because it's a school where, it's a specialized school. And so all the kids at the specialized school are there because they have an interest in performing arts. When you widen this and you have kids from all over that have different interests and the school doesn't, well, will Mount Vernon High School turn to a specialized school?
I can't answer that question. I can, let me just address one thing that you just said, though. For example, I've had cases where students, though they had a talent, they did not necessarily want to pursue that talent. And so they have transferred to Mount Vernon High School. Just a year ago, I had a student who was an excellent singer, but she didn't, she wanted to be a nurse. So she transferred into the high school, into the nursing program. I don't restrict students, put in choices. I believe in student choice. And so if a student comes to me and says to me, I want something else, I present what's available and they choose accordingly. Yes, ma'am?
I have to reference the Denzel Washington 6-12 model and look at the survey and respond to it. Because the difference with that model is that it allows parents to option. Kids mature at different ages.
Absolutely.
And if a parent, you could see a child, my child was referred to boy at Denzel Washington at grade 6. But when I observed his behavior, I knew he was mature enough to be in that school setting. So I opted to leave him at the age where he was. Now, as a parent, you could tell the kid if they are mature enough to handle that. And yes, having an option is excellent. But what you want to enforce it, there's a difference when you have kids that are not mature enough.
Let me just speak to, could I just speak to that for a moment? Because in sixth grade, what happened, we have two excellent sixth-grade teachers. I have to commend them because what they do is they really nurture and model for the students at the sixth-grade level. So by the time they get to seventh grade, they're really ready to explore moving from classroom to classroom. The way I schedule the sixth graders, the sixth, seventh, eighth grade is different from the way I schedule the ninth through 12th graders. The sixth graders, they only move about four times for the day. They have two teachers. One teaches ELA in social studies, one teaches math and science. They have their arts, they have gym, they have health, I'm sorry, they have media, and that's basically it. Right? They don't do a lot of movement. And so it's easier for me to work with the middle, the sixth-grade students because they are really stabilized. And they're able to be nurtured and be prepared for middle school. And that is the point of my presentation. If, once I have the sixth graders in my hands, I can take my time to nurture them and get them ready for the process. My sixth-grade teachers, they'll do a tour of the school. They'll do things like having lunch with them. Last year, we connected with a school in China. And so we were able to have an exchange. Children in Mount Vernon talking to students in China. They came to school at 6:30 in the morning to have that Zoom. And so it's, like you said, it's a specialized school. But I just want to emphasize that in the sixth grade, I am very careful how I treat my sixth graders. Yes, they are babies, and so I nurture them so that they're ready for the seventh grade. Thank you so much. I'm sorry, I'm having a question.
And going there since you were kindergarten, part of what's great, they're talking about him, is kind of consistency. So I know that one of the points of age was minimizing transition minimizes trauma. It creates consistency. So all of us here are not watching transition happen. Want to protect our children and minimize that transition. So just so you know, I think we all do appreciate what we just, what Denzel Washington does. But I don't think that that's going to be the case with every high school. I don't know, when I presented, when I presented, but how is it going to be at Mount Vernon High School? At least I might take Mount Vernon High School and be home now. And students feel very safe today. I've been walking past a lot of, I've heard no pod, unless you tell. What are you going to do with the safety for our kids?
I can only speak for Denzel Washington, and I appreciate the honesty. I appreciate the honesty. I can only speak for Denzel Washington. I'm very intentional when I do my business. And so, again, the other school principals and Dr. Smith can speak to what the plans are. I can, I don't know what the plans are because I am not a member of the committee. Okay, but again, I can just speak from my experiences with my school that I have been entrusted to. And again, there are so many things that we have done. We brought in a lot of teaching artists to kind of help, to guide our children along on this path. Yes, ma'am?
Again, this is probably going to be not necessarily a question for you. Thank you for providing an example of how the model could work in a very specific specialized school. I have questions for the committee about what does the admissions process look like for these kids going into seventh grade? How does that, is it the same as it would be going into high school? How does that change? My son is in fifth grade. He wants to be a race car driver. Like, he has not figured out life yet. So this idea that, like, within a year, he's supposed to pick potentially a major that he's supposed to track with for the next seven years of his career feels like a lot. So I'm just wondering what that process looks like.
Let me address one part of your question. The children are not locked into a major. Middle school for my school is exploratory. And so let's say that little Annie wants to be a singer in sixth grade. If she decides she wants to be an actor, she is more than happy to audition for the acting or musical theater. She wants to combine both. So it is not, it's not locked in.
But it's still within the arts. So I'm saying for kids who are not necessarily art inclined, right? What does that process look like for them in terms of how are we going to create stability and a lack of transition for them when they're going to be locked into something at the age that they're deciding at the age of 11?
So I'm going to table your answer because I can't answer that question. I'm going to table your answer, and I think it's a legitimate question, but I'm going to refer to Dr. Smith.
Thank you.
I do have a question regarding Denzel Washington specifically. So we have, what, 457th graders and something like 480-something eighth graders? How many more students is your school going to be able to accommodate?
Again, there's a feasibility study that Mr. Ray Monkey is doing at this moment. And so I can't really answer specifics because, again, I am not on the committee. I'm simply presenting my school as a possible example of how this model can works. So the opportunity for China, this is a legitimate question. Hold on. So the opportunity... So the opportunity to communicate with China came up because our students were curious. Our students wanted to know about other students in a different part of the world. We chose China because that was the school that responded to us. Thank you. Have a great night.
Good evening, everyone. I am Dr. Crystal Waterman. I am the principal of Edward Williams School. And I am also president of the Mount Vernon Administrators Group. I have, the portion of my presentation is just to talk a little bit about what some of the research says about a 7-12 model. As that is something that we have kind of talked about. As you've heard tonight, a decision has not been made. But we are talking about other possible models. Considering we have an example of a 6-12 model in the district and a potential 7-12 model as an option, we started looking at how this model works in society because it would not be unique to just our school district. There are school districts that have a 7-12 model. Before I do that, there were a couple of questions about scheduling when Mr. McCall was speaking about the K-8 and the challenges that are faced. So as a, now, when I was hired here, my school went from pre-K, half-day, and then full-day, K-6. And then eventually with the 2020 vision, we went up from, to seventh grade and then to eighth grade. Having seventh and eighth grade in the building, as you have heard already, outside of the financial challenges that we've had, there are academic challenges that are posed as well, as Mr. McCall so eloquently discussed. The staffing specifically. When you don't have teachers who are in the building all day long to be a full part of the school community, our students miss out on some of the cultural experiences that they could potentially have, like Denzel Washington School. Because we don't have the staff, I see your hand, Mom, if you would just allow me to finish, like at Denzel Washington School. And so why, one of the reasons why the potential 7-12 model is being considered is because the teachers that have those specialty areas, because New York State certification for teachers changes after sixth grade. A sixth-grade teacher is not certified to teach seventh grade. Once you get to seventh grade, teachers have specialty certifications. So when I was a teacher, I was certified to teach up to sixth grade. I couldn't go teach a seventh or eighth-grade math class because that's not my area of certification. So when you have seventh and eighth-grade students in a K-6 building, I have, if I had, just for example, one class, let's say one seventh-grade class, right? Let's say I have 25 students in that class. I need to hire a teacher to teach them ELA, a different teacher to teach that, this is one class, a different teacher for them to teach math, a different teacher to teach science, a different teacher to teach social studies, a different teacher to teach them Spanish, a different teacher to teach them career and technical education, and a different teacher to teach them technology. I feel like I'm missing a subject. And a different teacher to teach them health, unless a phys ed teacher has dual certification. So to teach one cohort of 20 children, I have to hire seven or eight different people. So when you think about it from a fiscal standpoint, that is a lot of money for one cohort of children. Now granted, there are nine periods in a day. Per the contract, teachers are able to teach five out of the nine periods in a day. And so once I have exhausted my teachers teaching those five periods, I have to find a teacher from another building who can come and teach, say, a sixth period or a seventh period because I have all of my children in the building throughout the day. And so it becomes, you know, if we have an opportunity to have all of our students who can benefit from the specialty areas of all of those eight, seven or eight people that I mentioned be in one building together that have teachers that are all certified from seventh grade to 12th grade in the same thing, then they can, we can maximize the human capital that we have available in the building. We can customize a real rigorous learning experience. At Mount Vernon High School, we currently have one of the most rigorous career and technical education programs, Mom. You talked about your child being interested in race cars, for example. There is, there are audio, I'm sorry, automotive opportunities available at Mount Vernon High School currently. So while Denzel Washington may be specialized in their specific area, there are plethora of opportunities for the children currently available at Mount Vernon High School and also available at the STEAM Academy. So that would sort of segue into what some of the research says about the benefits of children being in a 7-12 model. One of the potential benefits is that you can maximize the utilization of specialty areas of teachers for the students that are all in one particular building together. We're currently not able to do that. In addition, as an educator for a couple of decades now and a parent, we know that children, as Ms. Thomas mentioned, get to somewhere around sixth grade, seventh grade, and their social-emotional needs really begin to change. And so if students are all housed in a similar location in a 7-12 model, junior, senior high school, we can, again, address some of the social-emotional needs that the children may have at that particular age group because they're so moldable at that point. But we need to be able to maximize the resources that are available for them But we need to be able to maximize the resources that are available for them in one location. As a K-8 building right now, when I share teachers, yes, someone asked, do you share teachers that are in schools that are nearby? We do if we can, but that's not always an option. This year, where at Williams, and I'm sharing a Spanish teacher with Pennington who just started. And so we face these staffing challenges when we have teachers that are, you know, really moving around the building. In addition, when we have all of our scholars in one location, as Ms. Thomas mentioned, we have the opportunity for the continuity of their education, right? So one of the things that I will say I do love about the pre-K-8 model, having been in the district now for almost ten years, I have watched my babies grow up, right? I feel like their mother. I literally have watched them grow up from kindergarten, and some of them, you know, I graduated my first class last year as eighth graders. I cried like they were my own. But with the current model, because of some of the restraints, constraints that we have, they can continue to be nurtured potentially in a seven-twelve model as we build those same systems, those same structures, the same need for the social-emotional needs of the children, the same supports for our families that we currently have in our K-8 model. We're not at all looking to abandon, if we were to go to some model, something like this, we wouldn't be looking to abandon some of the practices that we have in place. We would be looking to expand upon more potential opportunities to make the learning experience richer for our students. So that would give an opportunity for us to align the curriculum, which is also what some of the research says could be a benefit of a seven-twelve model, is really aligning the curriculum. Dr. Doggett and I have had some preliminary conversations of what that could look like for seventh and eighth grade students in a seven-twelve model. And also, and my final point for this topic is that the data suggests, the research suggests that the data and the academic performance of children in a seven-twelve model as opposed to a K-12 model shows significant improvements. This is in rural, urban, and suburban communities. So when you have all of the children that are housed in one location, receiving a special, receiving their education from practitioners who are specialized in their area, certified in their specialty from seventh to twelfth grade, and they're housed in one location, we can maximize the resources. You heard about the fiscal constraints. We can maximize the utilization of the space and make sure that the staff and the students are in a location and meet the varying needs that they have, for example, as a race car, future NASCAR driver. So I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Are we going to have separate administrators and separate guidance counselors for the middle school and the high school model?
We have certainly talked about that, since I am on the committee, unlike Ms. Thomas. We have just talked, and again, these are preliminary conversations. Nothing has been set in stone. After the surveys, we wanted to have the town hall to hear from the members of the community. And just that, these are things that we've talked about, but yes, we have had that discussion. Yes, Mom?
All right. Fortunately, I'm a parent of three children in the Mount Vernon City School District. So I have one child in elementary school at Pennington. I have one child in middle school at Denzel Washington, and I have one child in high school at the STEAM Academy. So based off my experience with sixth grade, middle school, at Denzel Washington School, I'm very impressed. I love it. I love it as a parent. I really do. But I also realize there's a lot of resources being poured into the school. If we're doing this based off finances, where will we find money to pour these resources into the STEAM Academy? Because as a parent who's had their child in the STEAM Academy the last four years, I've been asking, why aren't the courses, well, why don't we have a course catalog to see the courses that are offered? Why is it that students are being given courses that they don't want to be in, and they have to plead at the beginning of the school year because they don't get to pick their elective? They're putting courses based off what's available. So where are we going to find the money to pour these resources into the school? One more question, and I'll, yeah, I think Denzel Washington is a very good school.
Great. So Ms. Thomas is going to talk about, a little bit about how they finance the resources. To your question about where we're going to find the money, I can't answer that question. But I think once you hear from Mr. Ray Mundy, I think it's Mr. Ray Mundy's doing the sort of the facility study, that is all being under, that is all under consideration in our committee meetings because we realize there is a fiscal need that does need to be addressed. But as a principal, as an educator for over twenty years, I don't want us to compromise the educational experience for our young scholars while we have to make sure we're being fiscally responsible. And so that's why we're having this conversation about what could potentially work best. And if it's not the seven-twelve model, then what model could work better?
So when does the question, when does the conversation about looking at other models start to happen? Because we keep saying we're not going to implement the seven-to-twelve grade model, but we keep talking about it.
As it's one that we've been considering. And again, like I said.
If all the conversations have been seven-to-twelve, that we're going to consider other models, when does that conversation start?
So just so you know, Mom, I have also looked into what could a six-seventh, me personally, like when I was doing this research, what could a six-seventh, eighth grade model look like, and then a nine-twelve model? But I'm one member on the community, on the committee. But this conversation did come up in the committee, so I started to go and look to see what some of the research said. But it's not conclusive at this point. There are models to be considered, but this is the research I'm presenting on this one. Could you just?
But I had asked a question, why were committees created before inviting parents in the community to join them?
So, wait, so I would look.
Because the committees are making decisions, they're making decisions for our kids, and we have no voice. And it's once the plans are finalized, then the community and parents come in, and we're basically herded into whatever narrative it is you want.
So Mom, you know how I found out about this committee? At a board meeting.
I heard about it in a meeting too, and they said that they would reach out to parents to join at the board meeting. And that never happened.
I was at a board meeting, and then I contacted Dr. Smith and said I would like to be on the committee.
That there were committees, and no one knew where the committees even started. And God has a funny way of doing things. As I was talking papers, in two thousand thirteen, the district, when they were doing these committees, they posted this on the district website as an application to have parents and community members join before decisions were made.
I heard you, I heard you mention that before, Mom. Again, decisions, decisions, as Dr. Smith said, as Mr. McCall said, as everyone has said, decisions have not, have not been made. They have, we have had conversations, and that's why we're here with the community today. This mom had a question. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I just, I think, this is a lot. And over the years, my kids went to school in Mount Vernon. I was a school counselor here in Mount Vernon, I was a teacher down there, and back in middle school. And over the years, every time it was nine-twelve, that's a perfect model, seven-to-eight, perfect model, one-to-six, then middle school, then they had a six, seven, eight, that was the perfect model. Then it was eight-to-five, that was the perfect model. Then one year, we had, as I was at Doggett, we were there together, seven-thousand and nine, that was the perfect year. All these different models are so perfect, but none of them are singing that stick, the problem. You know, we need to, and I'm not talking, I worked in a district, but I'm talking about just a homeowner and a taxpayer. And then you say they have, like you told, they have culinary, nursing, all that. I remember when we had it, and then they took it away. Now this is just to disco out here. Now they brought it back. So I think it's so, it's overwhelming. What, because these other places in Westchester are not going to that. What is the perfect, it can't be every couple of years, this is the perfect model.
I think since we have subcommittees that is, that are open to the community, as Trustee Kirwin is saying over here, as Dr. Smith said at the beginning, community members like yourselves are being asked to be a part of the subcommittees. Your sign up is on the district website. The sign up is on the district website, similar to the application that was in paper back in two thousand thirteen. We invite, the initial committee invites members of the community to be a part of the subcommittees, which is where the decision-making is going to happen. The decision-making hasn't happened yet. We have begun to have conversations. So I had, I had this mom right here with the gray sweater, and then I had this mom in the back with the red shirt, and then this mom right here, and then I'm going to sit down because I finished my part. Yes, Mom? I'm sorry, where?
She's right there.
Oh, okay, so that's, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm over, I'm behind, but um, can I just question, or?
Are you okay if she goes first? Are you okay if she goes first? Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
I was just wondering if like, in terms of transparency, the research that you're referring to could also be shared when these things are shared?
Absolutely.
I got to say, in preparation for this, I did research, and it is very easy to find in research that also says that it's harmful to young kids if they have a twelve. So I'm, and to her point, I think you can find research.
To support anything, yes. Absolutely. And as I mentioned, I did start looking into research of other potential models as well. But for tonight's presentation, my piece was to present what evidence there was to support the seven-twelve model. Yes, Mom, over here.
So, I'll say what I, I'm not sure who it will go to, but it's sort of a general that relates here, but it's not related to all of them. So somebody first of all, and I say it came because I grew up in a Canadian system, I am Canadian. So I moved here as an adult when I was breaking with my first baby, now it's STEAM in grade twelve. But most of the Canadian system, it's like ninety percent public schools, most of it is K to six, which is elementary, and then middle school, we call it junior high, whatever. It's seven, eight, nine, and then high school is ten, eleven, twelve, which is predominantly, it works. I'm not saying that's the model that, I'm just saying, it's a model that works across Canada, the public system for years, and we have a good system, and generally it's one of the better ones in the world. So it's sort of your, like, that model does work. You used to have a very similar model. I know when we first moved here with my oldest, his now son is in STEAM, that was essentially the model we had. Because STEAM was the middle school, which was failing, and then they dumped it. And then by the time he had to get to the, and he actually came, so when we moved here, like I said, you did have a very similar model. And then because it was failing, and the high school wasn't doing so great, when he got to school age, we chose to send him to a private school that is three-year-olds, two-grade, in a smaller physical space than any of your schools. It's in a basement, it's one hallway, and it's a very great, good school, and it's great. But I realize it's a different cohort, it's in, like, it's in the Bronx and Riverdale with a very different group of parents. But my point is, Bronxville, two minutes away, is K to twelve, so it's sort of their point. All the models are more, but no one's fixing the root of the problem, and I'm a teacher. I taught when I was in Canada, I taught public school, I taught special ed, I taught high school, I taught middle school. I understand the piece from the educator side, the fiscal piece, but you guys just keep moving the problem physically from like here to, figure out what's the root of the problem is. Because just moving children around doesn't fix the problem. You had a junior high that essentially didn't work. Then you moved them, now you're saying that, I've seen all of these models work, Bronxville works. The school my kids are at, which is K to eight, works. I still have a kid in the K to eight that had to move next year to one of the schools because they age out of grades. They don't have any capacity, so she needs to decide. But the point is, they couldn't work. It's a question of fixing the root of the problem, which never seems to get addressed. So just moving it doesn't do anything to the problem, you just create another problem, moving it like, so. I think the question becomes, not where they should go, because it could be anywhere and be settling. They could also be anywhere and be upset. So I think it's going deeper than that, and not just looking at research studies. Like, it's lucky for us, kind of, it worked, but didn't work in Mount Vernon. So I'm not sure why just moving kids, they can, they can be answered, kind of, in the Mount Vernon issue. In terms of just like, it's a bigger issue than that, and it's sort of, what this lady said, every few years, I'm like, oh, no. I mean, there's, Bronxville supports everything you're saying. They have K to twelve in this building, and he's been ranked in the top five ever since, like, you know, like, since I moved here and had to start looking into this stuff. I think it's just going deeper than like these studies and looking at, like, so maybe, and I get from the fiscal piece, but the reality is fiscally, it made more sense to have middle school to middle school back in the day, which didn't work, like, if they was a better school. So fiscally, that actually made the most sense, but it was failing. So I just think it's a bigger issue than just moving kids around.
I think you do the hand in the back.
Yeah, I, to kind of sum up what I hear here, I know that you guys are presenting your seven-to-twelve model because that you're now doing your research on. But I feel that what you're doing is going to corporate America. And in the area that I'm in, every two or three years, someone comes up with a great idea, and they try it. And then two or three years later, they go back to the old idea. So I think you need to stop doing that. You need, so, I, and I got the six-through-eight model from another parent that I was discussing this week. We know we had seven through eight, it's historically middle school. You know, that would maybe be dangerous for me. So I think you need to, if it's that with your K through eight, you've now mixed young with old that are discussing problems that will always exist in the school. Drugs, which is now lead-in making, sex, oral sex, which happens in the past. And you have bullying and gangs. Those have existed for thirty years. Figure out how to solve them. It's not about, let's get a different model. Figure out how to solve those four issues, sex, drugs, bullying, gangs. Those are your issues. Figure out how you want to solve them. As far as your teachers would be sensitive, I'll think of some ideas, and if I get on the committee, it seems like it's a misery, so I'm going to email you. Dr. Smith, it's coming from me, and I will copy my fifteen parents so that they are my email trail. Make sure I get on it, and my other fifteen parents. Thank you so much.
I'm going to address something because I think it's super important to people here. The reason we're looking at this is not just to throw another model out there. It's to have the discussion so that we could have a model that's sustainable. I need people to really digest it. The K to eight model was not a sustainable model. We did not have the fiscal resources to implement that model in a sustainable fashion. That's why we're here. We're not here to continue to reinvent the wheel. We're here to have the conversation so that we could put for this community a model that will work today and over time, and we can grow this community and take it where it deserves to be. That's why we're here. We're not trying to force a model down anybody, but the one thing that is clear is that the district could not before and cannot now support this model. There is a reason I've shown you those expenses increasing over time. There is a reason you do not see a lot of districts with thirteen middle school. I will address your comment. And before I end, I just want to say there is a fiscal analysis being done that will support this.
A hundred and eight million dollars. We took out a hundred and eight million dollar bond to create this model. And I'm saying it was never fiscally responsible. You have never voted on a hundred and eight million dollar bond.
I am, I am well aware, if the path, if the path continues.
Is it possible to go back to some form of a missile? Is it possible to go back to some form of a missile? There are countries that do have a price. Like, so that you're not just moving kids from, go back to some form of a missile?
I know. We are, listen, we're working together. I've never, the only reason I came to Mount Vernon is because I worked at another district for ten years, and nobody really wanted to come work in Mount Vernon. I'm going to put that out there. And, but I want to tell you, it upset me because I've always worked for high-needs school districts. This is where I feel the work needs to be done. So I'm not here to work against you. I'm here to work for you and with you, and so is this cabinet. So we're having the conversation so we could figure out the model. But did someone to tell me that it's sustainable when we've had budgets showing in negative amounts over years and years? It is not normal, and I will state this as clear as possible. It is not normal for your expenditures to exceed your revenue, and if you continue to do so.
It's not normal not to pay taxes for nine years either, but we have to do that.
I would like to discuss the one tax issue. So in two thousand twenty-two, they tried to propose a tax increase of only point five percent. It got resoundingly rejected. The voters did not approve it. So I understand your statement because it's questions we've had, but in two thousand twenty-two, when it was very much needed, very much needed for this district, it got rejected by the community. And I'm not blaming anyone for it, but that is the reality of the situation. And that did strike fear into the fact that are we unable to actually raise taxes like the other school districts are doing to keep up with the rising costs?
And we are not approving any taxes because all the bonds that we approved were stolen. When the thievery stops, then we can approve things that are going to benefit our kids. It has to stop. The nonsense has to stop. It happened in these arms. They thought five million was stolen, twenty-five million was stolen, they had to. They thought five million was stolen, twenty-five million was stolen, they had to lay off a hundred people and then all the hundred quit the Friday that they had to send the kids home. It has to stop. It's not just here, it happened other places. The thievery, we will not, I will make sure, I will do everything I can. Every time you guys are gonna go for a school budget, I'm gonna tell people not to go on it because you guys are wasting the money. The thievery must stop. We're not gonna stand thievery anymore, we're not gonna stand, stand for seven through twelve, we shove down our throat without having a voice. It has to stop. Change starts with one person, and I'm asking you guys to all join. We have to stop this.
I don't agree with you. I don't agree, I work for the district. I don't agree with you. I have Chick Wachalia when I, I vote on that because I know there's, these people all have children here. So that's, if that, you can't just, you have to stop the-
Thank you all so very much. It's six thirty-five, we have a board meeting. I want to at least leave feeling that you understand there has to be a change. Do we come to that understanding?
Yes.
Everyone?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so-
Change in leadership, change in, or change in taxes, not change in model.
Yeah, we're not, we're not-
Well, well, I want, I want to understand that you agree that you can't continue with the K eight model.
No, we don't agree with that.
You don't agree with that?
I have academic data, I have academic report.
Well, at the very least, we can't have thirteen middle schools. When that was, when it was voted on, when it was voted on, the state didn't agree with that model, but they approved it. So basically, it's a model that we cannot sustain. Now, I, I will agree that we presented something that you don't necessarily feel good about, but we cannot continue with a K eight model. Or if we did, we would close six schools and do K eight. That would be what we would have to consider. So I can't say we can't do K eight, but we would have to close some schools in order to continue that model. Yeah, so-
We're gonna close them anyway when we get to this model.
So what, what I would like to do, I promise you, we will meet again, and when we meet the next time, we won't have a board meeting. We have, we, we're gonna have to bring this to a conclusion because we, we do have a board meeting.
Should we get info on subcommittee, getting on subcommittees?
Yes, you go online and there's a QR code and you'll see all the subcommittees that you can sign up for.
How about you found that out for us? The subcommittee like?
Okay, yes.
I appreciate, I understand the situation financially and staffing wise that the district is in, but I also ask for, do not give up on parent involvement. I request that if we're gonna have a, a follow-up town hall meeting, that the information be pleased to be submitted by email, by robo-call, by notes in the students' folders because we have to kind of reach out. I, I know that there are people who feel that they had a difficulty answering the most recent survey because the information was not presented prior to the survey. And I know historically, there has been low involvement in voting in all ranges, but we really need, this is very important for us, and I, I don't want it for us to give up on parents being involved because they just don't. And if we can put the word out there for the next town hall in all formats respectfully to just increase the likelihood of people getting the information so that they don't feel like, oh, the district's just made decisions and they don't send out the information we don't know anything about, because that's the complaint that's gonna come out.
We will send it out in all forms. Thank you, everyone, for coming. So this concludes our town hall. We will send out the information as promised. We will also have the PowerPoint presentation available that you could activate.